Mr. Baccaram?
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Theomo. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Counselor Wu.
Counselor Yancey. And Counselor Zachem. Counselor Zachem. We do have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise while I invite Counselor Baker to the podium to introduce today's clergy. Please, after the invocation is delivered, I'd ask all members and guests to remain standing as Counselor Baker will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the pleasure of introducing Father Makos here today. Father Makos has taken over two of my probably most active parishes in Dorchester, St. Brendan's and St. Anne's, and he's also of Greek heritage, so that means quite a bit to my wife, who happens to also be Greek. I don't have my glasses on me, good thing we have large type. Father Makos is 37 years old, grew up in East Bridgewater, Mass. He graduated from Massasoia College in Brockton and attended UMass Boston for a year. Father Makos entered the seminary here in Boston in 1997. In 2001, he was sent to Rome to study for the priesthood. Father was ordained in 2005, and he has served as a priest in Foxborough, Amesbury, Whitman, and is now the pastor of St. Anne and St. Brendan's in Dorchester. So he's made the big time coming to Dorchester.
Father.
I think it's easier preaching in front of about 5,000 people at St. Peter's Square than here in City Hall, but I thank you for having the opportunity to offer this prayer today. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, we place ourselves in your presence. We ask for your wisdom. We ask you to bless our counselors, our people in this great city. Give them strength with your wisdom, and even in the busy times, may we never forget your spirit. We ask this in his name. Amen.
I thank you, Father, for that prayer. At this time, Counselor Baker will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance, Mr. President.
To the flag of the United States.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Baker will escort Father Makos from the chamber. Madam Clerk, would you please record that Counselor Lamatina is in the house. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from his honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1157, message and order approving a petition for a special law, an act relative to the changing of the name of the state Boston retirement system to the Boston retirement system.
Docket 1157 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1158, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept an expenditure grant of $262,500 from the BA Foundation Grant Number 5341 to the City of Boston's Office of New Bostonians to support the immigrant integration and empowerment initiative.
Docket 1158 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
I'm going to read.
Madam Clerk, please read docket 1159 through 1161.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1159, message and order for the confirmation of Ms. Helen Y. Long as a member of the Boston Housing Authority Monitoring Committee for term expiring January 4th, 2016. Docket number 1160, message and order for the confirmation of Mark Fortune as a member of the Boston Housing Monitoring Committee for a term expiring January 4th, 2016. Docket number 1161, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ms. Diana Christmas as a member of the Boston Housing Monitoring Committee for a term expiring January 4th, 2016.
Docket 1159 through 1161 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing. Petitions, memorials, and remonstrances.
Docket number 1162, petition of Paul Revia Transportation LLC for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston.
Docket 1162 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk.
I will do from 1163 to 1166.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Danner here as the interim commissioner of Public Works effective July 2nd, 2014, for a period not to exceed 90 days. Docket number 1164, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Keith Williams as the director of Small and Local Business Enterprise. Docket number 1165, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Kevin Coyne as the interim purchasing agent of the Purchasing Department effective July 2nd, 2014, for a period not to exceed 90 days. Docket number 1166, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of James Galilei as the interim commissioner of Transportation effective July 2nd, 2014, for a period not to exceed 90 days. Docket number 1167, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Christopher Cook as interim commissioner of the Parks and Recreation Department effective July 2nd, 2014, for a period not to exceed 90 days. Docket number 1168, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Justin Holmes as the interim chief information officer for a term expiring July 25th, 2014. And docket number 1169, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Lynn Courtenhouse as commissioner to the Boston Arts Commission for term expiring January 4th, 2019.
Docket 1163 through 1169 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1170, the constables Vaughn, Phaslimis Petit Matra, and Bryant Rains, having been duly approved by the collective treasurer, were received.
Docket 1170 will be approved under usual terms and conditions. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1170 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket number 1171, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 11th, 2014. Docket number 1172, notice as you see from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its June 25th, 2014 meeting.
Docket 1171 and 1172 will be placed on file.
Would you like me to read into?
Please.
Docket number 1173, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for the city council's action on the designation of the Old State House at 208 Washington Street, Boston, as a landmark in effect after July 28th, 2014, if not acted upon. And docket number 1174, communication was received from the city clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for the city council's action on the designation of the James Collins Mansion at 928 East Broadway, South Boston, as a landmark. This will also take effect after July 28th, 2014, if not acted upon.
Chair recognizes city council president Bill Linehan on docket 1173 and 1174. It's evident by the explanation of the clerk that if we do not take action here today, then this matter will pass on its own. And we've, in the past, have had votes on most landmark commissions, if not all, since my stay here. So on June 29th, the Landmarks Commission voted unanimously to designate Whitmore Hall inside the Old State House in the James Collins Mansion on East Broadway in South Boston as Boston landmarks. Both of these locations are in my district, and I thought it was important to just say a few words. These designations were approved by the mayor on June 27th, and I think that the Old State House is an amendment to our current designation, which will now allow Whitmore Hall in the interior of the building to be included in its entirety. Whitmore Hall is a 25 by 28 room east of the building. There were petitions and laws that were removed, and so this new designation will put that in place at the Old State House. The James Collins Mansion located on the corner of East Broadway and P Street in South Boston in City Point neighborhood was a very volatile and contentious issue for the community. The community wanted to see this mainstay on East Broadway to remain intact and that it have full landmark designation. I supported it, many of the council at large, and the community overall, so I ask you to suspend the rules and pass these two matters here today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Council President Linehan moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1173. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1173 has passed. Council President Linehan moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1174. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1174 has passed. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. You seem quite comfortable up here. I won't go on. Reports of committees. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. President, would you like me to read from docket 0512 through 0746?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0512, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, to which was referred on March 26th, 2014. Docket number 0512, a message and order to declare surplus city-owned form of Public Works Department parcels, property known as Tinian Street, Dorchester District, to the transfer, care, custody, and management and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0743, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, to which was referred on April 30th, 2014. Docket number 0743, message and order to declare surplus land and building located at 18 Barnes Avenue, East Boston, to transfer, care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0744, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, to which was referred on April 30th, 2014. Docket number 0744, message and order to declare surplus land and building located at Saratoga Street, East Boston, Ward 1, parcel number 0438100018, to transfer, care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0745, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, to which was referred on April 30th, 2014. Docket number 0745, message and order to declare surplus land and building located at 280 Meridian Street, East Boston, to transfer, care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. And docket number 0746, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, to which was referred on April 30th, 2014. Docket number 0746, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept from the trustees of the Public Library of the city of Boston a certain parcel of land located at Saratoga Street behind the former Orient Heights Building located at 18 Barnes Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts, 02128. The parcel with reference to Ward 1, parcel number 04381000, and transfer, care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, Counselor Lamatina, on docket 0512 and 0743 through 0746.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to commend the clerk for reading this. I think it was longer than my hearing on these docket. On June 26th, we had a hearing in regards to docket numbers 0512, 0743, 0744, and 0746. In attendance was Donald Wright. He's a deputy director of real estate management and sales for the Department of Neighborhood Development. And Tamiya Jones Johnson was a senior counsel for the Department of Neighborhood Development, Real Estate Management and Sales. Very briefly, docket 0512 is in Dorchester, Tannen Street, Dorchester. This property was transferred to DND from the Department of Public Works as they no longer need a parcel. It's 3,190 square feet. Parcel is unbillable, and they will put an RFP out shortly for this property to be used as commercial open space. Now, docket 0743, 0744, 0745, and docket number 0746, this is the Meridian Street Library and the Orient Heights Library. As you know, last year, a new library was built in East Boston. These two libraries will be going out to bid, so DND is planning to put a request or proposal for these two libraries for the building space. And that's my report, and I urge my colleagues to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. We'll move them individually. Counselor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0512. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0512 has been passed. Counselor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0743. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0743 has passed. Counselor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0744. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0744 has been passed. Counselor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0745. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0745 has been passed. Counselor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0746. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0746 has been passed. Docket 0760, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0760, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on April 30th, 2014. Docket number 0760, ordinance regarding residency preference for the Boston Police Department and the Boston Fire Department submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0760.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to recommend passage of docket 0760. It's an ordinance that seeks to extend the residency preference from one year to three years prior to taking the civil service exam for police officer and firefighter in the city of Boston. We had an informative hearing that was held on July 1st. We heard from the Boston Police Commissioner, Commissioner Evans, as well as the acting fire commissioner at the time, Commissioner Hassan. Both spoke in favor of the ordinance as a way to increase diversity among the ranks, to attract individuals who are vested in the community, and to decrease the likelihood of fraudulent residency claims. We also heard from Larry Ellison, president of Mamleo, and Ray Sean Johnson, president of the Boston Society of Vulcans, who also expressed their support, believing this ordinance would also provide additional opportunities to young people throughout the city. This has no impact whatsoever on the veterans' preference. It expands the one-year residency preferred under state law that we currently under, we're currently under two or three years. And with that, I have a committee report recommending passage at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0760. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0760 has passed. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard, please, for possible action.
Docket number 0927, ordinance creating a college athlete bill of rights.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 0927 and 0928. Is that it?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll defer at this time to the lead sponsor, Josh Zachem.
Did you read?
I'll read 0928.
Okay, please.
Docket number 0928, ordinance creating a college athlete head injury game day safety
Counselor Zachem, the maker of these two.
Mr. President, I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for conducting an expeditious and well-run hearing on this, as usual. My colleagues, Counsel Murphy, who has been a leader on this issue in the city of Boston for our youth sports leagues since before my time on this body, and also Counsel Jackson, who was able to contribute at the hearing. I think it was a very informative hearing where we heard from national advocates for college athletes, medical experts from the Sports Legacy Institute. We had written testimony from other medical experts who unfortunately could not be there. And we also heard from many of the colleges and institutions that call Boston home. And I think we made some real progress on reaching common ground on a lot of the issues addressed by these bills. Number one would be providing game day safety protocols, much like we do have for our youth athletics in the city of Boston, thanks to Counsel Murphy's work, that the NFL and the NHL are implementing for professionals, but that, shockingly, the NCAA does not have for college athletes. So I look forward to continuing to work on that matter, and as well as the College Athletes' Bill of Rights, providing ongoing medical treatment for college athletes where we can, they can show that the injuries have been caused as a result of their playing for their colleges or in the practice fields. We look forward to continuing, I believe we'll schedule a working session with Counsel Flaherty and the Government Operations Committee on that, to continue working on the language. So this time, we ask that it remain in committee.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Zachem. Docket 0927 and 0928 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Motions, orders, and resolutions, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1175, Counsel Zachem offered the following ordinance, establishing a Boston Trust Act.
Chair recognizes Counsel Zachem on docket 1175.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce an ordinance to create the Boston Trust Act to provide for restoring trust and improving cooperation between the Boston Police Department, our law enforcement agencies, and citizens, residents, people across the city of Boston, in our immigrant communities and throughout this city. I have been honored to partner with the mayor and his administration on introducing this legislation, and Counselors Lamatina and Jackson have both already reached out, expressing their support and willingness to work on this to address what I believe is a real crisis in some of our communities in the city of Boston. It's my belief, as chair of the Civil Rights Committee, as a Bostonian, as a member of this body, that all Bostonians should feel safe in their communities, and going to the police when they need them, and responding and participating fully in their communities, and they should not hold back due to fear of possible deportation because our local authorities are cooperating with federal immigration agents on noncriminal matters. Since the federal Secure Communities Program has been implemented in Boston, half of those folks deported who have been detained under this program and later deported had no prior criminal convictions, and a large majority of the others who have been detained and then deported had low-level prior offenses, such as driving without a license. I think what we need in this city, and this is something that's been repeating itself across the country, not just in Massachusetts, where Somerville has done this recently, but across the country, because the Secure Communities Program is not doing what it was supposed to do, which was to help ICE detain, discover, and determine the immigration status for violent criminals in the area. That's not what's happening here. These ICE detainers are issued where there is no probable cause. There isn't even an alleged crime. These are for civil immigration violations. The bill that I have introduced, which I know all my colleagues have copies of, provides for real safeguards for violent criminals, convicted violent criminals, on this program. We have safeguards already in place. We should not be complicit in violating folks' due process rights, violating their equal protection, just because, you know, someone at ICE says, you know, "Hold on to this person for a little while," at city expense. There is no federal reimbursement for the cost imposed on the city through this program. And more and more, there's been a federal court case in Oregon recently. There are more that are coming up to bar that are saying that local authorities who are complying with these detainers and holding folks are civilly liable. There are financial penalties for violation of folks' civil rights who are being held. There have been U.S. citizens who are caught up in this because there is no review, there is no due process requirement. When an immigration agent says to the Boston Police Department, "We'd like you to hold this person for an extra 48 hours so we can investigate their status." These are people who would otherwise be released, whether it's on bail, whether it's on their own recognizance, whatever it is, for the underlying alleged crime. And I just think that's not something the Boston Police Department should be expending their resources on. It's not something the city of Boston has a beacon, I believe, for immigrants, for people from across the world and across the community, a place of equality for everyone should be participating. to be participating in. I think this, this program, the Trust Act, will make our community safer and will make sure that all Bostonians feel safe and welcome in our city. I look forward to working on this, hope to have a, you know, a swift process, working with the mayor, working with my colleagues here, to implement this act in the city of Boston. Thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Please, please, hold your applause. Thank you. I thank you, Counsel Saikum, Counselor Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take this opportunity to commend my colleague, Counsel Saikum, on this very important resolution. And I think he explained why we need this resolution passed. I can tell you, in my neighborhood, East Boston, where I live, we have a lot of undocumented residents that live there right now. And the stories that I hear are really horror stories. And they, and these are real stories, the people that live in my neighborhoods, women being sexually assaulted, raped, and they won't report it. And they won't report it because they're scared that they'll be deported. I have people that work, and they work hard. Workers in East Boston, they work, they work hard. And a lot of them don't have bank accounts. So they work hard and they save money and they keep their money in the house and they get robbed. And they don't report it because they're scared that they'll get deported. I have people coming home from work late at night and they're getting jumped and beat up. And they don't report it because they're scared they're gonna be deported. And the sad thing, the sad thing, and this is true, a lot of these victims, they know who did it. But they're scared to report it to the police because they're scared that they will be deported. So this is, these are true stories in my neighborhood of East Boston. I am working closely with my immigrant groups in East Boston to try to build relationship with the police because a lot of these workers, where they come from in their countries, they're scared to go to the police in their countries. So we want them to be able to feel comfortable calling the police when they're victims of crime and really build that relationship in East Boston. Last year, I mean, it's unfortunate, unfortunate that our Congress won't act on immigration laws and reform. It's something that we passed last year, a resolution asking the Congress to pass a comprehensive immigration reform and update the immigration system. So this is a very important issue for my neighborhood, and I would ask you guys, my colleagues, to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to commend the maker. It's about time that Boston takes a leadership role relative to this issue. Secure communities does not secure communities. It actually destabilizes communities. As Counselor Lamatina brought up, there are law-abiding citizens who get attacked, who get sexually assaulted, who get robbed, but they can't feel like that they could pick up the phone and actually have someone have their back. The police are there to protect and serve, and I would submit that they're there to protect and serve everyone, not only folks who are citizens. And when we look at a city where travel and tourism makes up the fourth-largest bucket that we get money into the city from, and Counselor Lamatina's district, there are hundreds of restaurants. We know, in all honesty, much of our economy is attributed to folks who can't pick up these phones, to people who actually are paying into a social security system that they're probably never, ever going to be able to derive any, any benefit from. I personally had a friend, a friend's brother who was picked up in Lowell, and it's a really scary thing that happens. This system works such that they arrest somebody, and within a couple of days, he was actually sent to Philadelphia, and then he was sent to, to Texas, to a court where sadly, this family had two lawyers who ended up exploiting them, and they ended up having to pay about $40,000. One lawyer took money and then another lawyer took money, didn't do, didn't do anything for them. Long story short, all of this was based on a marijuana conviction that he had. They were actually able to work with folks at the, at, or in, in Boston to get that conviction vacated. He's now in good standing, and they were able to get him back. But they, he saw hundreds of people renounce any possibility of having U.S. citizenship in Texas, as judges just push, push folks through. Boston Police, the Boston Police Department should not be a party to that. The city of Boston should not be a party to that, and we have to stand up for the citizens of the city of Boston. And I would say that the citizens of the city of Boston are the people who actually live here, who contribute here, and the folks who raise their kids here. We want to make sure that we have their back as they have our back. And I want to give a great deal of credit to Josh Saikum for the great work that he's doing on this, leading, leading this charge. Lastly, Mr. President, there are folks who would, and we're, we're in a country now where people are pushing around little kids, who are saying that they shouldn't be able to be in our country, and, and all kind of disparaging comments. This, we have to do what the federal government isn't doing, which is to protect the people in the, in the city of Boston. Washington needs to get it together. We need to pass comprehensive immigration reform, and we need to take people from being in the shadows and allow them to take, take on the full opportunity of being an American citizen. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Would you like your name added? Counselor Lamatina, your name. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too would like to commend a good colleague from District 8. This piece of legislation is very consistent with the legacy of human rights fighters who come from the city of Boston. It's very consistent with those who say that all human beings should be accorded human rights. It's consistent with the reality that this is a nation of immigrants, this is a Commonwealth of immigrants, and this is a city of immigrants. So I think this is in the fine tradition of those people who came before us, who demonstrated their compassion and concern for the human rights of everyone. So I commend our good colleague for filing this. I also agree with the previous speakers. No one should feel, feel inhibited in reporting a crime. And if anyone feels that way, that's a crime in and of itself, and it's scandalous. So let's create an environment where those individuals who've been victimized at least can seek some justice without fear of retribution because of their immigrant status. And I also believe that we have a lot of work for our police and other public safety officials to attend to, and this is not one of them. This is a federal issue, let the federal government deal with it, hopefully in a more progressive way than what's been done today. So I rise, Mr. President, I ask that my name be added and to commend Counselor Saikum for offering this today.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Please add Counsel Yancey's name. Counselor Presley. Your button was pushed.
I just want to, you know, commend the leadership of Counsel Saikum and Counselor Lamatina, and this is certainly a historic demonstration of the need for a civil rights committee. So I want to thank you for your leadership in this space and just say that, for me, this is a moment where I feel especially proud to serve on this body. You know, very often, we celebrate the diversity of the city of Boston, and we do that with our parades and festivals, and we all participate in those things. But the true way to honor immigrants and their many contributions to our culture, our climate, our economy, is to treat them as an equal neighbor and to fight for an equality when it comes to justice. Everyone deserves to feel safe. Everyone deserves to feel safe. In a moment, we'll speak on the resolution introduced by Counsel Saikum and Wu in fighting for, to protect our janitors with the MBTA, an invisible workforce. Our immigrants are so often relegated and reduced as if they are invisible, despite the many ways in which they are contributing to this Commonwealth. They deserve our respect, they deserve our refuge, and an equality in justice, that they not be targeted racially profiled, or harassed, or made to live in fear. It is a civil right to feel safe walking your street, in your home. And so I asked to have my name added, and again, I commend Counsel Saikum for his leadership in this space. It's, feels very good to see the Civil Rights Committee taking on issues such as this. And Counselor Lamatina, thank you as well.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Please add Counsel Presley's name, add Counselor Baker's name, and please add my name. Counselor Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Counsel Saikum for his work and leadership on this, and for my other colleagues who have already expressed their support, and also thank Mayor Walsh, who has also come out in support of this legislation. As a daughter of immigrants, I know very well the sacrifices that our immigrant residents make as they're working hard to support their families while dealing with cultural barriers, language barriers, the contributions they make to our society, and also frankly, the fear and frustration, especially when there is that sense of distrust between government and not knowing who and if you can turn to anyone. So this legislation as proposed, I think, strikes an important balance between creating that room for trust and for communication while still protecting public safety. So really, so proud, as you've heard, that we, as a city, can take this on. Many of my colleagues have said already, federal immigration reform, comprehensive immigration reform, has been needed very badly for a long time now. And while there's gridlock up there, I'm proud that we, at the city level, can do something about it and proud to be part of it, so please add my name as well.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Docket 1175 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, could you recognize that Counsel Yancey is present?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Docket 1176.
Docket number 1176, Counselor Flaherty offered the following order for hearing regarding public awareness of sex offenders.
Counselor Flaherty on docket 1176.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the previous administration, the city's public TV station stopped broadcasting important information about sex offenders working and living in our communities. There are currently over 600 Level 2 and Level 3 sex offenders living in Boston who have moderate to high risk of reoffending. Several residents have expressed their concern, have brought this to my attention, and are concerned with the termination of these very informative public safety broadcasts. So it's critical that the city get that information that is very easily accessible to all citizens as a matter of basic public safety. So I know that I've had a brief conversation with our commissioner who does support it, and the administration supports it as well. So looking for an expedited hearing to sort of flush out the mechanics around getting this public service announcement back up on the city's cable station, and also identify reasons why it stopped. It stopped about several years ago, probably about the same time that, I know it's a similar issue that Counsel Yancey has raised about how they stopped broadcasting city council hearings at a certain point, but it's the same issue that we've grappled with, with the city's cable department. So this, along with other issues, probably could be vetted at that same hearing, but there's no reason why particularly parents of small children should know who's living in their neighborhood, on their street, on their block, particularly if they're Level 2 or Level 3 sex offenders. So look for an expedited hearing. Appreciate anyone's offer of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Docket 1176 is assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 1177, Counselor Murphy offered the following order for hearing to discuss policies and procedures relating to drug use and overdose at private, overdoses at private concerts.
Just recess for one quick second.
Has seen disturbing trend of close calls due to drug use at concerts. August of 2013, three people overdosed at a concert at the House of Blues. One of them tragically passed away. A month later, in September, eight people were arrested for drug distribution at the Ocean Club at Marina Bay. And just a couple of weeks ago, June 25th, 80 young concert goers require medical attention at the TD Garden. Luckily, no one passed away. Boston's EMS service, police department, and hospital resources were utilized responding to the TD Garden emergency, which was classified by public health officials as a mass casualty due to the amount of people treated on scene. Concert goers were treated for symptoms related to drug and alcohol use. All emergency personnel responded in the way they should, but valuable resources were used to address something that in my eyes was preventable. This body has a responsibility to do everything in its power to protect the citizens of Boston. The young adults who chose to do these drugs and attend the concert posed a risk to themselves and to others on the road and in the area of the Garden. I'm calling on this, calling for this hearing in order to have a public conversation with our local concert venues. We need to know what steps these venues take to monitor or prevent drug abuse on their premises. Do they train their personnel to remove patrons that exhibit signs of drug use? Do they hire extra security, especially for musical acts that are associated with drug use? Do they notify public safety entities about the concert, prior to the concert? I think that's important because when I talked to Jim Hooley at EMS, he said that the Garden has a private ambulance service, Cataldo, that's, I guess, contracted with the Garden. And there were like 30 calls for Cataldo ambulances. 30-odd ambulances were sent out of there. And then Boston EMS got four additional calls for people that had left the Garden and were on Causeway Street or in the surrounding area up to Park Station that had been at the concert. And so we have 28 ambulances on the streets of Boston, and four of them were tied up at roughly the same time, based on TD Garden's concert venue. So do they communicate with EMS? Do they communicate with Boston Police? I remember when we had the, the Marathon bombing, our emergency personnel were moving people to nine different hospitals so that hospital facilities were not overwhelmed in any one location. Everybody that was taken out of the Garden went to Mass General Hospital. If they had properly communicated with EMS, EMS might not have brought hospital, people requiring hospitalization to Mass General at that point in time. They might have diverted them to Brigham and Women's, or Beth Israel, or Boston Medical Center, based on the availability of medical help as soon as the ambulance arrives. So I think it's an important conversation that we have here in this chamber, in the public, about private venues and how and what they do to maintain the safety of the public and the concert goers on their own property. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask my colleagues to join me in this effort.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Docket 11, please add Counsel Wu's name, add my name, Counsel Jackson's, Counsel Lamatina, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Presley, Counsel Yancey. Docket 1177 is assigned to the Committee on Public Safety. Madam Clerk, 1178.
Docket number 1178, Counsel Wu offered the following order for hearing regarding lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer homeless youth in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counsel Wu on docket 1178.
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't hear as much about homelessness in the summer months in the city and across the country. We see a lot of the articles in the winter and frankly, during the summer, a lot of reference to reference to homelessness is from groups who want to make sure that their park benches are clear at night, and business districts who complain that there are men and women experiencing homelessness that are outside, what can we do about it? But our responsibility as a body and as a city is to really understand the underlying issue, and when you go and you visit these shelters and organizations and speak with the advocates, you hear that over the last couple of years, even within the last year, there's been a shocking rise in the number of homeless youth. And in the city of Boston, there's only one shelter right now that provides emergency shelter for youth ages 18 to 24. There are 12 beds available. For youth under 18 who are not with an adult, there are no beds anywhere, so youth often have to lie about their age, or more frequently, they don't feel comfortable entering the same shelter system and are on the streets year-round. In the LGBTQ community, this has, the estimates of LGBTQ youth experiencing homelessness are up to 40% of youth, and so this is an issue that needs immediate attention, even though it is summer, and this is the time to start talking about it so that we can be ready and think about the resources, not just for emergency shelter beds in the city, but for youth services and wraparound community spaces that we can be conducting outreach and making sure everybody has a place they can turn. So I want to give a special thank you to Erica Corre from my office, who is a law student and policy fellow. She came into my office saying this is the issue that she wants to work on this summer, so she did all the research and all the legwork in putting together this hearing order, meeting with many, many advocate groups. So we are excited to put this hearing together and ask for your support and participation in thinking of who else should be involved and what possible solutions we can brainstorm. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to compliment Counselor Wu on this issue. It's one that I'm very passionate about. Last year, I actually got to participate with Counselor Leland Chung of Cambridge in a fundraiser for this specific issue. We actually did a DJ battle to raise money for Bridge Over Troubled Waters and Soul on Fire, which is an organization in Cambridge. What we found out, interestingly, is that there's technically enough beds in the city relative to homeless folks, but when it comes to homeless LGBTQ young people, we absolutely don't have enough beds, and in particular for the trans population, there's an additional level of difficulty and complexity with the population in terms of where they go. What this translates into, Mr. President, is that these young people are forced onto the street, and they actually, more often than not, are trading sex for a place to stay. Their chances are exponentially higher of being in that situation versus straight youth, and you know, we have exponentially higher rates, in particular, in the Black and Latino community of HIV transmission. We want to make sure that, as we have today, really looked at, looking at vulnerable populations in the city of Boston, and this is absolutely a vulnerable population. In addition, as Counselor Wu alluded to, it's a population that is growing, it's the fastest growing aspect of homeless populations in the city, most often because as people come out, oftentimes their parents or supposed loved ones actually push them out into the street, so it's something that we definitely should work on. I would like to have my name added. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Please add Counselor Jackson's name, Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor Murphy's, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Zachem, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Flaherty, and please add my name. Docket 1178 is assigned to the Committee on Housing. Docket 1179, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1179, Counselors Zachem and Wu offer the following resolution in support of MBTA janitorial workers.
Chair recognizes Counselor Zachem on docket 1179.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Wu for joining me on this. We had a very informative hearing of the Transportation, Public Infrastructure Planning and Investment Committee, it's a bit of a mouthful, on the proposed cuts by the MBTA to the janitorial contractors and janitorial workers who do that work on the T throughout this, throughout the greater Boston area. I really appreciate Counselor Wu's attendance and partnership on this, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Presley, we're all participating in the hearing, and I think really were able to join with me in hearing the stories from a lot of the workers, from 32 BJ who are here today in the audience. I want to thank them for being here today and for being at the hearing and providing their stories and telling about some of the struggles and really the conditions that they already work in before the proposed cuts are in place, where we will be losing almost 100 of these janitorial jobs at a time when the T is, I believe, already at capacity. Fares have just risen about a week ago, I believe to the day, or a little over a week ago, fares have risen, tens of thousands of people are riding the T every day. We want people to come to the city of Boston, we want our tourists, we want our students, we want our workers, we want our families to be able to use the T in a safe and clean manner, and I just think beyond that, the fact that we have folks who are hardworking, many for decades in these positions, and the T is choosing to balance their budget, I think, on the back of the people who it should not be balanced upon, I think we need to speak. As a city council, unfortunately, we don't have, you know, oversight authority of the T. If not, I would think I'd be able to respond much more quickly to many of our constituent concerns about transportation in the city of Boston, but we do have a loud voice, we do have a bullhorn here at the Boston City Council, and I think it's incumbent upon us as a city that pays close to $100 million in contributions to the MBTA. We just approved the budget a few weeks ago to say this is not the way to balance the budget of the MBTA. We need to make sure that we're protecting the rights of our workers, we're protecting the folks who ride the T every day, and we make sure that the city of Boston is a leader on this. So I want to thank my colleagues for supporting me on this, and Counselor Wu for co-sponsoring this with me, and I urge, obviously, passage of the resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor Murphy.
...of leadership on the issue. I'd just say this is another classical case that we've run across time and again here where you're picking on the little guy, and the T with its new contracting services has set up a kind of a, I guess they've put a scenario down where they've set the workers up to fail to keep the stations clean, because we heard from a couple of workers that are cleaning four stations now and are eating their lunch in the 15-minute time period, excuse me, cleaning two stations now, and having about 15 minutes to eat in between cleaning. And each one of these workers is going to have four stations come September 1st to be responsible for. So I don't know how they can double their workload without doubling the time that's being asked of them. But that's another thing where, years ago, the city of Boston was the first council, we were the first council to do the living wage with the theory that a rising tide lifts all boats, not just the yachts, and here, this stuff continues, and it's a public agency, and as Counselor Zachem so eloquently said, about $100 million of our tax dollars go towards funding and running the MBTA. All of us are advocates as part of our elected office, sometimes we control the budget, sometimes we advocate to other agencies. This is a case where we're advocating to other public officials, appointed public officials, and appointed board that needs to respond to the people that live in our neighborhoods that represent, that we represent here on the council, to do the right thing, do the fair thing, do the just thing, and again, I commend Counselor Zachem for his leadership on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise also to thank Counselors Zachem and Michelle Wu for putting this together. I met with the workers several weeks ago, and you know, let me just put it right out there, you know, these jobs are not glorious by any stretch of the imagination. What they do on a daily basis is really unimaginable to us who put skirts and ties on and come into a nice, clean building, because as Counselor Presley said earlier, they are the invisible workforce. We appear at a station that's nice and clean, we have no idea what it was like just three, four hours ago. We have BPS students who will be arriving in September, taking buses and trains on Monday mornings. It's the MBTA's responsibility, really, to continue to have a world-class transportation for world-class students and world-class city. This is not a numbers issue, as Counselor Murphy alluded to. This is a timing issue. If you cut these numbers, it's very simple. These workers who work very diligently every single day, they simply will not have enough time to do what they are expected to do, and they are being set up to fail. And I just want to just say that I will certainly help in any way I possibly can to make sure that the MBTA reconsider's, and certainly make sure that these hundreds of jobs and families that will be affected are maintained. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to commend Counselors Zachem and Wu for offering this resolution. It's my hope that it will be passed, suspended, and passed today, and again, this is in the fine tradition of the Boston City Council. We stood with the hotel workers when their employers were trying to defeat them, we stood with the custodians, we've stood with security workers, and yes, we've even stood with the Boston school bus drivers. So I think it's altogether appropriate that we stand with the working people of Boston and greater Boston, and join specifically with the MBTA janitorial workers, because we're witnessing a very obscene series of events. The fares are going up, have gone up, for the MBTA, and now we want to decrease services. We're disrespecting the hard-working janitorial workers, but we're also shooting ourselves in the foot if we do not allow these workers to continue to maintain these stations. Very often, the impression one receives of the city of Boston is the cleanliness of the MBTA. So if we take away from that quality of life issue, we may well be seeing a reduction in even tourists coming to our great city. So let's stand with the janitorial workers, and again, I would support suspension and passage as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Presley.
...and impassioned words by everyone here today on every matter, really just echoing Counselor Yancey's words, very proud day for the body, and I'm looking forward to voting in the affirmative. It is, it just really just flies in the face and belies all reason, and even just what is morally right, that we would be divesting in such a critical workforce at a time of increased ridership, increased fares, and the addition of 4,500 BPS students. But the reason I wanted to rise right now is just to reiterate a point that I made at the hearing, something that I was very struck by with the very compelling story shared by this very dedicated workforce. Their first concerns were that of the threats to public health, public safety, and the impact on the overall rider experience. No one came here fighting for their families, and we certainly don't want to lose sight of that in this, that this will destabilize their families, and at a time when we should be investing and increasing this workforce, showing our gratitude for their dedication and their service, and the many ways in which they deal with unspeakable and dangerous things every day, you know, this is just not the way that we should be rewarding them. But I just wanted to stand and just make that, because I was very moved by the fact that no one was there fighting for their job in order to keep their family stable, but we don't want to lose sight of that, that this is not only about the rider's experience, but also about families that stand to really be devastated if these cuts do go through. So I rise to commend Counselors Zachem and Wu, and look forward to voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I really appreciate the tone and the tenor of today's council meeting. This body is discussing some very impactful and important issues, challenges that we face in this society, on safety, on justice, on housing, on jobs, and wanted to rise to commend the two authors, Counselor Wu and Counselor Zachem, on this issue. I attended the hearing that Counselor Zachem held on this week or week and a half or so ago, with many of our colleagues behind us who joined us in that and gave some powerful testimony. And I mentioned then, what struck me was the fact that the day after that hearing, the MBTA was raising their fares, and this seems to me to be somewhat of a tradition with the MBTA, and it also seems to me to be a completely counterintuitive business model, where they are cutting services and raising fares. And what will happen, should this go through and the stations become less clean and less safe, you will have fewer people riding the MBTA, and we've seen this, we've had this conversation since Charlie first got caught on that cab in Scully Square several generations ago, is that the T is continually hemorrhaging money. They need a real, realistic solution. I am hopeful that the next governor, whomever he or she may be, can address it. I give credit to this current governor for making a real effort to address it, but we need to really focus on this, and this is absolutely the wrong way to go about strengthening and making the MBTA financially solvent. By making it less appealing for our constituents, for us, for our neighbors, for our friends to ride it, fewer people are going to do it. So I will proudly stand shoulder to shoulder with the men and women behind me and those that are out working the stations right now, and I know with all of you, to just really urge the GM and her team to protect these jobs, protect this necessity to make the MBTA a functioning and reliable public transit system. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the authors for this. Ask that my name be added.
Thank you. Could you please add Counselor O'Malley's name, Counselor Baker's name, Counselor Flaherty's name, Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Presley, Counselor Yancey. At this time, Counselor Wu, sorry I jumped over you because you're a co-maker and you should have, you should have been second here in the line, so you have the floor.
...said already, because this body is so committed to supporting workers and particularly focusing on this issue, so it's an honor to partner on the resolution, coming after Counselor Zachem's hard work on drafting the original hearing order and his advocacy behind the scenes. The hearing was incredibly powerful to hear from all the workers on how hard you work now and the job at hand, to really hear the details on how different this is from cleaning commercial buildings, right? The uncertainty that you face, the pictures that you brought of needles and other types of spills and cleanups that you have to deal with on a daily basis to protect the public health and public safety of our riders, and as Counselor Presley said, that was first and foremost at the hearing. So I was very moved by that and proud to participate. Another thing that has also stuck out to me was our good colleague at-large counsel from Hyde Park's original statement when this was filed, reiterated today, that we have a responsibility, not just as a city where our residents are riding the T a great deal, but as a body and a city entity that is contributing assessments, and really having that extra responsibility to put our efforts where our money is going and make sure that the T is following up as well. So proud to be part of this, and again, I think we have the support, but I urge everybody to vote in favor.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to join the course today. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to stand with Counselor Zachem, as well as many other elected officials, and listen, and also feel the power of 32 BJ. I think there were probably a couple thousand folks who actually shut down streets in the central part of the city of Boston, on Washington Street, and as noted, folks here were advocating for the health and safety of the riders. Well, it's our job to advocate for families, it's our job to advocate for what we will lose. Again, the worst of government is when we raise fees and give people less service. The worst of government is when we actually extend hours, which is a good thing, and now we're going to say with extended hours, we're actually going to give less cleanliness. These are folks who work, I would say, way harder than I do on a daily basis, and deserve to be respected and deserve to have the dignity of the job. And the irony here is that they're cleaning up a transit system which so many people use to get to work, and now we're cutting off their jobs. We should do better. With the huge losses that the T faces on a regular basis, this is not the way to step forward. forward and to move forward and step on the rights and the families of workers. We should reverse this train and go in the opposite direction and restore these jobs. Please add my name, Mr. President.
Please add Counselor Jackson's name and please add the chair's name. At this time, Counselor Zakeem and Counselor Wu move suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1179. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1179 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, 1180.
Docket number 1180, Counselor Yancey, you offer the following-
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. There was a light and I didn't recognize it. Madam, Counselor Wu.
Sorry to disrupt the order, but if we could just revisit docket 1178 for a second. It was assigned to the Committee on Housing. The issue is about housing and shelter, but also about wraparound services. So with Chairman Baker's blessing, would ask for reconsideration and placement of 1178 in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families and Communities.
So on the floor is reconsideration of 1178. Any opposed to that? All right, then docket 1178 will be assigned to the Committee on Women, Community and Healthy Families. Or is it healthy? I had it right. Healthy for everybody. Sorry, Madam Clerk, 1180, please.
And 81?
And 81.
Docket number 1180, Counselor Yancey, you offer the following order, requesting information under Section 17F, a list of active employees as of March 31, 2014, with the name titled, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race, residency, and a list of all new hires, promotions and terminations by the name titled, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race and residency, between January 1, 2014 to March 31, 2014. And docket number 1181, Counselor Yancey, you offer the following order, requesting certain information under Section 17F, a list of active employees as of June 30, 2014, with the name titled, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race and residency, excuse me, and a list of all new hires, promotions and terminations by the name titled, department, annual salary, hiring date, gender, race and residency, between April 1, 2014 and June 30, 2014.
Chair recognizes Counselor Yancey on dockets 1180 and 1181.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As you and most of our colleagues know, for the last 30 years, I've been receiving waterly information from the administration on the issues raised in both of these 17Fs. While I urge everyone to give our new mayor the benefit of the doubt and give him support as I support him, I don't think it's acceptable to begin the practice now, will become even less transparent than the prior administration. I know the mayor does not want to do that. But the information requested in this 17F is, again, essential information if you're concerned about the issue of diversity in the city of Boston, if you're concerned about residency, if you're concerned about seniority, not that many people care about seniority these days. But I think it is important that the public has access to this information and that at minimum, that legislative body of city government has this information, which of course, the executive branch has. Now, Mr. President, these two 17F orders will be added to a number of others that are on the green sheets, have yet to be responded to by the administration, including a 17F calling for a list of all no-bid contracts for fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 14. The personnel information, the information about contracts is really essential. And I intend to issue an interim report on fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 14 within 60 days. I'd like to have this information so it can be a comprehensive report. So through your great offices, Mr. President, I would just ask you to join me and others in prodding the administration to provide this information, which I know they want to provide. And I know they're dealing with 1,000 and other issues, and this may seem to be relatively mundane and even unimportant, but let me assure you, Mr. President, that it does make a difference whether or not we have departments that are diverse. It does make a difference whether employees live in the city of Boston or not. Based on information I have right now, Mr. President, more than $400 million a year goes to salaries for Boston employees who do not live in the city of Boston. That's a substantial economic resource that taxpayers in Boston should also have access to. So I know that's kind of a long-winded request for suspension and passage of these 17Fs, but they are very important issues to keep us informed in terms of what's happening in the city government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Yancey moves suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 1181 and docket 1180. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1181 and 1180 have passed. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1182, Counselor Lenihan for Counselor McCarthy.
Counselor McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1182. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1182 has passed.
Docket number 1183, Counselor Lenihan.
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1183. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1183 has passed. I'm informed by the clerk, there are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. Madam Clerk, read the first late-file matter.
Order of Counsel Bill Lenihan, order that effective Saturday, July 5, the following named person hereby is appointed-
Personnel matter?
Yes.
Yeah, Counselor Murphy moves suspension of rules and passage of first late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. First late-file matter has passed.
Second late-file matter is from Counselor Frank Baker, Boston City Council, District 3, dated July 7, 2014. This is Maureen Beany, city clerk. Dear Clerk Beany, members of the Boston City Council were invited to attend an overview presentation by the Mayor's Office of Fair Housing and Equity on Tuesday, July 8, 2014, at 12:00 p.m. in the Boston City Council Curly Room. Sincerely, Frank Baker. Counselor Frank Baker, Chair of the Committee on Housing.
Counsel Baker, if you want to say something.
We just had a presentation yesterday in the Curly Room, so we could go over the ins and outs of fair housing. It was well-attended by most officers here. I think Counselor Jackson also came in and it was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Would that matter be placed on file? Counselor Yancey?
Please recess, please.
Sure. Matters from the green sheets may do so at this time. No takers? There are three late-file matters which, in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, William J. Dougherty. For Counselor Flaherty, Robert Borad. Kristen Wolet O'Neill. For Counselor Lenihan and Flaherty, Kathleen Morrison. For Counselor Lenihan, Flaherty and O'Malley, Carmela Charpe. And for Counselor O'Malley, John Kevin Kennedy. For Counselor Lamatina, Joanne Duffy, Roberta T. Horn, Jeremiah J. Sheehan, and Michael Stoichkow. For Counselor Yancey, Astley Carl Smith and John Lynch. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it is so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, July 30, 2014, at 12 o'clock noon. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.